Seeing none, let me call today's January 5, 2015 council reorganization meeting to order. And if everyone would please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, then a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you remain standing for a moment of silence. Thank you, everyone may be seated. And before we get to roll call, I'd like to welcome Judge Nicholas to our chambers. Judge, it's always a pleasure to have you here. Madam Secretary, roll call please.
Gary Simpson.
Here.
Marlin Milner.
Here.
Olivia Brady.
Here.
Sonya Sanders.
Here.
Derek Perry.
Here.
Lynda Christian.
Here.
William Caldwell.
Here. Thank you, Madam Secretary. Next item on the agenda is a slot for some remarks from me as the outgoing council president, and I will keep them brief, believe it or not, counsel, for my last remarks from this bench. I really just wanted to thank my colleagues, my council colleagues, for giving me the opportunity last year to serve as your president. It, I mean, obviously, it's an honor to do so, but with the group that we have here, it was, it was a pleasure to do that also, and I just want to express my fondest, fondest thanks to all of you for your support this year and the good things that we got done. We got an awful lot of good groundwork laid down this year. If you remember, you know, we came into last year with a brand-new, or at least fairly brand-new administrator and an almost brand-new police chief, and I think we've given them some stability this year to really dig in and get their jobs started, and we certainly appreciate those, the work that they've both done, and counsel, it was because of your patience and your dedication to that goal that we were able to do that, so thank you for that. And Chief, what are we, how many months are we today, knock on wood? How many months since we've had a homicide, are we, and what's our?
[laughing]
I know we're never supposed to say that, but...
It's been quite a few.
Quite a few, I like that. With, we're doing very, very well on those things, so. I will jinx the whole, the whole room now and say that, but things, I think, are looking, looking very, very good for, for Norristown, and we're on our way, so. With that, I will leave it, you know, it's always a...
Excuse me, Council President, if I may.
Yes.
Gas prices are down.
Gas prices are down, it's all good. With that, I think I will, I will end my comments and open up the nominations for Vice President of the 2015 Council. Do we have nominations for Vice President? Councilman?
I nominate Olivia Brady.
Do we have a second? I'll second that. For Vice President. Do we have any other nominations?
I'd like to entertain a nomination for Sonia Sanders.
I'll second that.
We have a nomination for Sonia Sand, Sonia Sanders and a second. Do we have any other nominations? With that, the nominations are closed. Madam Secretary, Sean, how do we do a...
We have a motion first.
Very good. All right. I will take the...
Derek.
Let's do a roll call, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. We need a roll call vote for the nomination of Olivia Brady.
Gary Simpson.
No.
Marlin Milner.
No.
Libby Brady.
No.
Sonya Sanders.
No.
Derek Perry.
Aye.
Lynda Christian.
No.
William Caldwell.
No. The noes have it, and I will take the nomination for Sonia Sanders.
Gary Simpson.
Aye.
Marlin Milner.
Aye.
Olivia Brady.
Aye.
Sonya Sanders.
Aye.
Derek Perry.
No.
Lynda Christian.
Aye.
William Caldwell.
Aye. That nomination is carried. Sonia Sanders is now our new Vice President. Next item on the agenda is the nominations for President of City Council. Councilwoman Brady.
Thank you, I'd like to nominate Lynda Christian for President.
Second. We have a nomination with a second. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Nominations are now closed for President. Madam Secretary.
Gary Simpson.
Aye.
Marlin Milner.
Aye.
Libby Brady.
Aye.
Sonya Sanders.
Aye.
Derek Perry.
Aye.
Lynda Christian.
Aye.
William Caldwell.
Aye. The ayes have it. Councilwoman Christian, you are now our new President. With that, the outs of office will take place, and with Judge Nicholas. And then first will be Vice President.
I, Sonia Sanders, do solemnly swear that I will support, obey, and defend the Constitution of the United States of America.
[inaudible]
And the Constitution of Pennsylvania.
The Home Rule Charter of the Municipality of North Carolina.
The Home Rule Charter of the Municipality of North Carolina.
And the laws of Pennsylvania and the Municipality of North Carolina.
And the laws of Pennsylvania and the Municipality of North Carolina.
And with this chart, I will discharge the duties of my office as Council Vice President.
With the Municipality of North Carolina.
With the Municipality of North Carolina.
With honor and fidelity.
With honor and fidelity.
I will uphold, obey, and enforce the laws of Pennsylvania and the Municipality of North Carolina.
And the Municipality of North Carolina.
Without consideration to a person's race.
Without consideration to a person's race.
Color.
Color.
Sex.
Sex.
Religious creed.
Religious creed.
Sexual orientation.
Sexual orientation.
Age.
Age.
National origin.
National origin.
Ancestry.
Ancestry.
Handicap or disability.
Handicap or disability.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thanks for not giving me a lot of...
[laughing]
[inaudible]
Thank you. Thank you all, thanks for your service, thanks for inviting, have a great New Year.
Thank you, good New Year.
new council president. First of all, I'd like to thank my council colleagues for electing me to serve as your president this year, and many thanks to Councilwoman Caldwell for a job well done. Councilwoman Sanders, congratulations on your election as Council Vice President. As Bill stated, we have accomplished much during 2014, and I promise to keep us moving in a forward direction in 2015. Norristown Council is composed of seven representatives who have different perspectives and have opposing opinions on some issues. I am very proud of the fact that this council is willing to engage in healthy debate, to appreciate differences, to advocate on behalf of different causes, and to work on a shared vision. A shared vision is what council was attempting to create when we had our retreat in early 2014. During the retreat, council discussed its structure and participated in an exercise to determine the priorities for Norristown, priorities based on our shared vision. The top four selected priorities were, number one, a safe community; number two, economic development; three, home ownership; and four, youth and family activities. We will continue to work on these priorities in 2015, along with two additional priorities, budget and communication. One of my first acts as your president is to ask our administrator to ask our secretary to discuss, to schedule a January council-only retreat for the purpose of discussing strategies to ensure that identified priorities remain on track. My second act as council president is to ask Council Vice President Sonia Sanders to ensure that we stay on track as far as our finances. What I mean by this, during our budget process, we discussed certain things that may have to go away. We also discussed the impact during our retreat of high taxes in the Norristown area with the thought of ensuring that we come up with good ways to handle, and because council as a whole does so much, we need an ideal person to make certain that council is on track with administration to see those objectives through, so I ask you to take the lead on the finances. Again, counsel, thank you for electing me as your president, and I look forward to serving. With that being said, I call to order the January 5, 2015 council meeting. Mr. Solicitor, we should follow through with the pledge and silence again?
Yes. Maybe you have to get the reorganization.
Yeah.
Oh, I did it.
We're not on a regular day.
Oh, thank you, my apologies. Well, at least I was on mark with my remarks. Mr. Solicitor, in looking for resolution for 15-101, do I read out each area, or do they have to be done one by one?
What I can recommend is so long as there's going to be, you can make a motion to approve Agenda Item 11A through O, that's less if there's any debate on it.
Okay, then my question to council, council, are there any areas of debate on Items A through O? Counsel, I'd like a motion to approve Resolution 15-101, appointing Items A through O.
So I move.
I have a first and a second, does this require roll call? Madam Secretary, roll call, vote please.
William Caldwell.
Aye.
Marlin Milner.
Aye.
Gary Simpson.
Aye.
Libby Brady.
Aye.
Derek Perry.
Aye.
Sonya Sanders.
Aye.
Lynda Christian.
Here.
I'd like to advise attendees that council met in executive session prior to tonight's meeting to discuss litigation.
And personnel.
And personnel. Thank you. Councilwoman Caldwell, any announcements?
Yes, Madam President, we have three announcements. The first is the 10th anniversary of the Martin Luther King Day, Martin Luther King Living the Dream Award Ceremony, which will be held on Monday, January 19, at 6:00 PM in council chambers, so that's coming up very soon. The second item is Christmas trees will be picked up during the week of January 12, and that should be set out as regular trash, if I'm not mistaken. Okay. And the third is the Norristown APP is available, or, excuse me, the Norristown App. I just showed my fifty-some years of age, didn't I? The APP, otherwise known for you under 25 as App. The Norristown App is available on Android phones right now, so if you've got an Android phone, you can pick that up and get all the stuff that's on our website on that. It will be available shortly for iPhones. That's everything I need to say at this point, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman Caldwell. Counsel, are there any other announcements? And then, Madam Secretary, any public comment?
No, but there's point of order, item number four wasn't, the motion for, to approve the minutes, wasn't done.
Thank you so much, Madam Secretary. Counsel, I'd like to request a motion to approve the minutes for the December 16, 2014 council workshop.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Madam Secretary, any communications?
No, there's not.
Thank you. Counsel, before I request a motion on State Street Advisors, I'd like to ask our administrator just to brief us on the motion.
Thank you, council members. You have in your packets a letter from Lois Haggerty, who has been our consultant from State Street Advisors, requesting that she continue to be our lobbyist from State Street Advisors. As you know, we have paid Lois $5,000 a month for providing those services to us, and that amount remains unchanged for the coming year, and it's appropriate that council would, if it so chooses, make the reappointment at this, at this time.
Councilwoman Brady.
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Jones, for the sake of the public, I know it was outlined a bit in our, in the letter that you had in our packet, but I'd like to review some of the highlights of what State Street has provided for us in the past year, and what we can look forward to in the same for this year.
Certainly. Well, as, as you know, and I'll, I'll start basically with scope of services that they provide, and I'll talk, get some specifics in terms of some of the things that they provided for us in, in the past year. As you know, one of the roles that we have with a lobbyist, both at state and federal level, is to help identify our potential public funding sources, particularly through state and county government, and, and in Lois's instance, that she has also been involved with us in terms of some of the federal discussions that we've had to have as well. She tracks and monitors legislation in the Assembly related to economic development on, on our behalf, also collaborates with us, the Redevelopment Authority of Montgomery County, and the, the county itself, to develop strategies that we have for development in the municipality. She also has provided project to support to us on applications that we've submitted for funding with public sector entities, again, such as the authorities, such as the state of Pennsylvania. And also, she served as a liaison and, and as a team member in our government relations and consulted us, with us, and operated on our behalf as a lobbyist at the state in, in both representing Norristown's positions on legislation that is being considered. She's actually helped to craft legislation that was favorable to us, and certainly make sure that our input was, was involved in, in that legislation. Specifically, I know that in terms of, as council is aware, we had some RACP, I think the common use is RCAP, but it's RACP money in the, in the amount of about $850,000 that the municipality had, had been awarded some time back. Because those funds had not been utilized, we were in imminent danger of actually losing those funds as the state was targeting those funds for other purposes. It was largely, in part, to Lois's efforts, that we were not only able to, to stop that, but actually have those funds program, reprogrammed, and go through the whole process of reprogramming those funds for project, the PNC Bank project that council approved several months back. And so those funds were able to be successfully utilized for that purpose as well. Jane, I don't know if there are some other specific examples that you have, but I know that Jane, myself, the president of council, meets monthly with, with the, with Lois to discuss our issues, and there had been at, at a point in time where we had had monthly meetings with the, with the, one of the members of the county commission, as, as was needed over the last few years, and, and we certainly have, continue to have those on projects that we are, we collaborate with the county on as well.
Counsel, any other questions?
If I may, I'd like to also point out that Lois was very instrumental in also identifying and helping us secure home funds, and also mediate the Affordable Trust money with the county, as well as the Food Trust, that is some of the work she has provided for us.
Thank you very much, Ms. Missoneye. Counsel, don't know if this is especially appropriate or not, but I know also during our 2014 retreat, we talked about council members also visiting our state and local, our state and federal representatives in an effort to boost or advocate on behalf of Norristown, and I, to me, this seems like an ideal time to ask perhaps Councilman Simpson and Councilman Caldwell if they will have a conversation with Lois Haggerty and arrange for council to take this trip that we've been talking about for a while, and for the administrator to make sure that we're, we're of the key areas on where we need to advocate, because of course, funding continues to be a high priority. just to brief us on the motion.
Thank you, Council members. You have in your packets a letter from Lois Haggerty, who has been our consultant from State Street Advisors, requesting that she continue to be our lobbyist from State Street Advisors. As you know, we have paid Lois $5,000 a month for providing those services to us, and that amount remains unchanged for the coming year, and it's appropriate that Council would, if it so chooses, make the reappointment at this time.
Councilwoman Brady.
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Jones, for the sake of the public, I know it was outlined a bit in our, in the letter that you had in our packet, but I'd like to review some of the highlights of what State Street has provided for us in the past year and what we can look forward to in the same for this year.
Certainly. Well, as you know, and I'll start basically with scope of services that they provide, and I'll talk, get some specifics in terms of some of the things that they provided for us in the past years. You know, one of the roles that we have with a lobbyist, both at state and federal level, is to help identify our potential public funding sources, particularly through state and county government. And in Lois's instance, that she has also been involved with us in terms of some of the federal discussions that we've had to have as well. She tracks and monitors legislation in the Assembly related to economic development on our behalf. Also collaborates with us, the Redevelopment Authority of Montgomery County, and the county itself, to develop strategies that we have for development in the municipality. She also has provided project to support to us on applications that we've submitted for funding with public sector entities, again, such as the authorities, such as the state of Pennsylvania. And also, she served as a liaison and as a team member in our government relations and consulted us, with us, and operated on our behalf as a lobbyist at the state in both representing Norristown's positions on legislation that is being considered. She's actually helped to craft legislation that was favorable to us and certainly make sure that our input was involved in that legislation. Specifically, I know that in terms of, as Council is aware, we had some RACP, I think the common use is R-CAP, but it's RACP money in the amount of about $850,000 that the municipality had been awarded some time back. Because those funds had not been utilized, we were in imminent danger of actually losing those funds as the state was targeting those funds for other purposes. It was largely, in part, to Lois's efforts, that we were not only able to stop that, but actually have those funds programmed, reprogrammed, and go through the whole process of reprogramming those funds for project, the PNC Bank project that Council approved several months back. And so those funds were able to be successfully utilized for that purpose as well. Jane, I don't know if there are some other specific examples that you have, but I know that Jane, myself, the President of Council, meets monthly with Lois to discuss our issues, and there had been at a point in time where we had had monthly meetings with the, with one of the members of the County Commission, as was needed over the last few years, and we certainly have, continue to have those on projects that we collaborate with the county on as well.
Council, any other questions?
If I may, I'd like to also point out that Lois was very instrumental in also identifying and helping us secure home funds and also mediate the Affordable Trust money with the county, as well as the Food Trust. That is some of the work she has provided for us.
Thank you very much, Ms. Misonier. Council, don't know if this is especially appropriate or not, but I know also during our 2014 retreat, we talked about Council members also visiting our state and local, our state and federal representatives in an effort to boost or advocate on behalf of Norristown. And to me, this seems like an ideal time to ask perhaps Councilman Simpson and Councilman Caldwell if they will have a conversation with Lois Haggerty and arrange for Council to take this trip that we've been talking about for a while, and for the administrator to make sure that we're aware of the key areas on where we need to advocate, because of course, funding continues to be a high priority for this Council as a whole. And I wanted to go on record to make that ask. So Councilman Simpson and Councilman Caldwell, are you willing to see that through? Thank you. I'd like to request a motion to approve State Street Advisors as the Economic Consultant for 2015 per their letter dated December 17. Does this need a roll call?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That was Councilman Milner? Was that Councilman Milner?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I wasn't sure. Okay, the motion carries six to one. Mr. Jones, can you bring us up to speed on the Resolution 15-102, various reappointments?
Certainly. As Council is aware, there are some vacancies that have occurred and that some have occurred during the course of previous year on various boards and commissions. And so this resolution is a call for reappointments specifically in some, and then there are some areas where you may need to make some appointments and some nominations from Council members for appointments to that. If it would please the Council, what I'll do is just identify one by one the areas where you might need to make some appointments, and if the proper protocol is to, for Council to discuss in those areas whether you want to act on them tonight, we'll go category by category until such time as we've gone through the list.
That would be ideal. When you speak of the vacancies, however, they won't be the ones where people have asked to be reappointed, correct?
The ones that are asked to be reappointed are identified on here.
Okay.
And so, for instance, I know that there are two vacancies on the Planning Commission that currently exist and need some nominations. I understand that Council members did submit some names to Sandy Grubb. And so if any nominations are, for those are in place, I haven't, I don't have them. But Zoning Hearing Board, there's an alternate, Tracy Quarles Ford, is, this resolution would be to fill the remaining term of the alternate that would expire on December 31, 2017. There's also one vacancy on this board.
She didn't ask for reappointment, Grandal?
From what I understand, this resolution is actually the reappointment.
Of Tracy?
Of Tracy, as the alternate, to fill the remaining term that will expire on December 31, 2017.
Okay.
Council President, if I may, I think typically what we would do with those seats that need to be, that are vacant, at that particular point, you collect all the names that you can collect, and then everyone can vet them, they can go through, you provide that information to all the Council members, they can go through those, and then from that list, we can look at what individuals we see fit to want to add to whatever committee has vacancies, specifically to what those individuals have requested to sit, what commissioners, commissions or boards that they want to sit on.
Right, and that was my understanding. For the resolution itself, I wanted to ensure that this resolution covered those that asked for reappointment, because it speaks to reappointment, and that it didn't include anything that came in afterwards, so that Council would have an opportunity, you know, perhaps to submit the names. But in the resolution, Mr. Jones, this is specifically for the reappointments, for the letters that we received in our packet?
That's correct. All of these names, where there are names, are people who want to be reappointed.
Okay, and you were speaking about the actual vacancies, and I know that there are clear vacancies, as you said, on planning. Clear vacancy on zoning, you said?
Yes.
And in what other areas?
The zoning, the, let's see, planning has two, zoning hearing board has one vacancy. Okay. Yes. Yes. Yes.
But the alternate is the one that's clear, correct?
Yes. That's right.
Yeah.
The Parks and Recreation Committee, Cheryl Collins, Brian Bale, John Myers, requested to be reappointed for terms that will expire in 2019. For the Municipal Waste Authority, Jack Ochnick.
Ochnick.
Ochnick wants to be reappointed to a five-year term that expires in 2019. Matthew Light for the Board of Code Appeals requested to be reappointed to a three-year term, expired in December 2017. For the Civil Service Commission, John Sheehy, five-year term, requested to be reappointed, five-year term that will expire December 2019. For Harb, George Brotherton and Robert Di Liberto, to four-year terms that will expire December 2018.
Did they request reappointment? I didn't see a letter for those two individuals.
I'm presuming they did, because Sandy received all of the letters and put the resolution together for folks who requested.
Rested reappointment.
Absolutely.
Are these all Norristown residents?
They would have, they would have to be to be.
Madam Chair.
I was just getting ready to turn around, Mr. Councilman Milner. Councilman Milner?
Mr. Jones, can you elaborate on these nominations that we're not considering, that were turned in after the fact? And why is it your understanding that that would be appropriate, and who are those people?
The nominations that we're now considering?
No, that, no, 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 I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
So you, when you introduced this item, you started off by saying there were names turned into Sandy that are not included here.
Correct.
And then Councilman Simpson later clarified what our normal process is. So I would, part of the inquiry here is, why haven't we been forwarded those names and/or have those people submitted letters? I mean, there's a typical process here that brings a person's name before us.
Those names were not submitted in time for the agenda.
True, but I'm saying.
When the agenda went out.
Right.
And I know that Sandy made requests for letters once we got the names of the people who were interested. So the request for the letters have come, has gone out to those individuals.
So, yes, so you've introduced that information, and I'm saying, who are those people and for what positions?
Well, my understanding is Councilman Simpson, I know you made us aware very recently.
I can speak to it.
Okay.
So there are some, there are some of my constituents in my district who are, who have sought, whenever the information came out, I provided that information to some of my constituents. Some of my constituents then replied back, so I provided their names and information, where all Council will receive a copy of their names and information, once Sandy goes through the process of obtaining a letter. I got them their name, their email and the phone number. She will contact them, request letters that, what they are interested in, and then we will get that information once they, once it's returned. So there is no information to give at this particular time.
So they have not, in fact, expressed?
By contacting me, they expressed an interest.
Right.
Sandy will then follow up to gain a actual letter from each individual, specifically detailing what they are interested in, why they are interested in. They will also probably give her a copy of their resume, and at that particular point, we will then get that information and make a decision based off of the information provided by those specific individuals. That's how we always have done it.
Right, right. Thank you.
Council, any other questions? I'd like to request a motion to approve Resolution 15-102, various reappointments to boards and commissions.
Second.
Madam Secretary, roll call vote, please.
William Caldwell.
Aye.
Gary Simpson.
Aye.
Marlon Milner.
Aye.
Olivia Brady. Derek Perry.
Aye.
Sonny Sanders.
Aye.
Linda Christian.
Aye.
The next item on our agenda is legal. Mr. Solicitor, if you'll explain the ordinance.
Yes, thank you very much, Madam President. You have a motion between, essentially a housekeeping ordinance. You have an ordinance before you which is essentially a housekeeping ordinance. Council is well aware of the debate related to the lost or stolen gun legislation. Unfortunately, the legislation that was passed by General Assembly essentially could fall under an umbrella of any regulation of firearms that a municipality does that is not specifically provided for by the General Assembly. We made a recommendation to all our municipal clients to go ahead and go through their ordinances to see if there was anything in there related to regulation of firearms that perhaps that a litigious person could bring suit and challenge this, and of course, the municipality would then be on the hook for attorney's fees. So I contacted Mr. Jones, Mr. Jones contacted Ms. Grubb. Ms. Grubb went through our code of ordinances, found some old ordinances here that could possibly be questionable. So based on that, we put together an ordinance here to repeal those older questionable ordinances. Because the deadline to do so is January 5, I talked to Mr. Jones, and Mr. Jones contacted Mr. Caldwell, who was present at the time, got authorization to go ahead and advertise this for this evening, just to make sure the municipality is covered and nobody who is, say, looking for a lawsuit is going to find one. So this is the ordinance that is before you today, which essentially is related to repeal of Section 2218E, prohibited activities. Section 155, which is firearms and weapons, and general law of Norristown is repealed in its entirety, and all other ordinances inconsistent. So that's what we have here this evening. It's essentially a housekeeping matter. None of these ordinances are actively being pursued or cited under. It's merely a housekeeping matter.
Thank you, Mr. Kilken. Council, any questions?
And this needs a roll call vote, if there's.
Okay, I'd like to request a motion to adopt Ordinance 15-01 regarding the possession of firearms.
Second.
Madam Secretary, roll call.
William Caldwell.
Aye.
Gary Simpson.
Aye.
Marlon Milner.
Aye.
Olivia Brady.
Aye.
Derek Perry.
Aye.
Sonny Sanders.
Aye.
Linda Christian.
Aye.
Thank you, and that ordinance passes. Mr. Jones, will Ms. Misonier lead us in the certified local government grant?
Yes.
Item?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Misonier.
Thank you, Council President. It's that time of the year, the state has notified us through the Building Department that the funds for certified local government are available. The, we were just notified last week, that's why we're bringing this application now, because the application is due on January 16, which is before our next council meeting. The purpose of these funds are to pay for consulting services for Harb, that is, technical assistance, not only to the Harb, but also to the Building Department. At this particular year, we're asking for $15,000. It's a dollar-for-dollar match, which means we have to match $15,000. We'll match that with $10,000 of in-kind. That's in-kind, that is what we would pay Lynn Bexler and any other official that handles these matters. And $5,000 will come from our general fund for a total of $15,000, and then we're asking for $15,000 from the state so that we have a total budget of $30,000. One different thing we're doing this year, instead of just using it for, to assist with Harb, technical assistance, we're also asking to increase the public outreach, particularly translating the material to bilingual for our Spanish-speaking residents. I want to reach into that community so that they can understand and appreciate historic preservation activities. We're looking in particular to see if we can have a welcome package so that they are appreciative of the resources of the historic preservation. Of course, there's no guarantee we'll get the grant, but that's, we're hoping that that is one of the uniqueness of our application that will make us successful. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Council. Any questions? Councilwoman Brady.
Thank you. It's my understanding that this was a line item in the budget this year?
Yes, we already have the match for it.
Thank you.
Councilman Milner, did you have your hand up? No. Council, any other questions? I'd like to make a motion that we approve the submission of the application.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ms. Misonier, approval has been granted. We're under Public Safety. Chief Talbot, do you want to give us information about the two officers?
Yes, ma'am. So the department's currently at 65, police officers are authorized strength at 67. In August of 2014, Detective Grzinski retired, and in December of 2014, Lieutenant Shannon retired, leaving these two vacancies. Civil service examination was given last year. As a result of that civil service examination, candidates Joshua Samuels and Joshua Keenan were near the top of the list. At the very top of the list, that's amended, was Joseph McCreary, who subsequently received another job offer and has decided not to pursue employment with Norristown. So based on Joshua Samuels and Joshua Keenan being the top two candidates on the list, I'm asking that they be given a conditional offer of employment.
Council, any questions?
Council President?
Yes, Councilman Simpson.
Chief, what would that bring us up to?
I'm sorry, sir.
What would that bring us up to as far as staff?
That'll be 67.
Okay. When air came out though, I'm sorry.
Councilman Perry.
Question I have is, when we do lose officers from retirement or anything like that, and this process comes about, how can we do a faster process to get the top candidates that take the civil service test? Because it seems like every time, every time you, we turn around, you're saying that we had two candidates that you were interested in, and then we lose one to another municipality.
That's something that we're probably going to continue to struggle with. I think there might be things that we could do a little differently. Part of the problem is one that's, comes with surrounding departments frankly paying more money and having greater latitude in their hiring processes, because they don't have the type of bureaucracy you have with this type of government. So, you know, it partially goes along with the territory, and partially there are some things that we probably need to review and revise. things that we probably need to review and revise.
Councilman Milner?
Thank you. Chief Talbot, can you clarify this phrase bureaucracy vis a vis, say, surrounding townships or non-home rule charter boroughs that are around?
Sure. So, you know, depending on your form of government, it's going to impact whether or not you have to go through certain steps when you want to hire somebody. There, there are police departments that can just accept applications and decide right then and there who they want to hire. You know, we can't do that sort of thing. So what we do is just going to take longer than some of those departments. You know, in my mind, as long as we get qualified candidates, we have, we have two highly qualified candidates, got very good scores. One of the two is a minority, you know? So I, I think that this is an example of we got through the process as quickly as, as we could and we got two good people. And, and you know, frankly, we have a good system in place and they're going to be good police officers.
Thank you.
Councilman Simpson?
Well, one last, one last question, chief. And, and it was right here in, in front of me, but, so typically, what is our, what is our actual strength? I know years past, we were, it was around 71-ish. Is that still the capacity that we need to be at to be full strength? How many individuals do we currently have out? Like, where are we at as far as our strength of staff?
So 67 is, is the number that we are authorized to have on the police department. We are at 65 right now. I'm not sure of the exact number of long-term absences. I think it's about six, you know, plus or minus two, I'll say.
Okay.
So that's where we're at right now.
Counsel, any other questions? I'd like to request a motion to approve Resolution 15-103 offering employment with the Norristown Police Department to Joshua Samuels and Joshua Keenan.
Second.
Madam Secretary, roll call vote, please.
William Caldwell?
Aye.
Gary Simpson?
Aye.
Marlin Milner?
Aye.
Olivia Brady?
Aye.
Derek Perry?
Aye.
Sonny Sanders?
Aye.
Linda Christian?
Aye. This motion carries. For our next item, Mr. Solicitor, we will be speaking about the towing contracts to EVB and Morello Incorporated. And I'm hoping that you will deliver a statement.
Thank you very much, Madam President. Counsel talked about this matter in executive session as a matter of potential litigation because one of the proposed towers, Janeway, at, per the last council meeting hired counsel and put Norristown counsel on notice that they perhaps will be pursuing litigation. We were asked to review their letter and I also discussed this with counsel and counsel wanted to just reiterate for the public record, the process it went forward and the reasoning why it's our office's recommendation along with the police department and staff that you award the towing contracts to EVB and Morello. Just as a matter of some background, EVB Towing, Morello and Janeway responded to the RFP. The responses, responses were evaluated by three Norristown officials, the police parking enforcement coordinator, the public works director and a code enforcement officer and a scoring system. The RFP say the contractors who have their primary place of business located within the corporate boundaries of Norristown will be ranked one level higher than the initial assessment. The raw scores for the three evaluations were EVB 82, Janeway 76 and Morello 62. The weighted scores were EVB 27.6, Janeway 25.4 and Morello 19.4. Counsel discussed and voted to award the contracts to EVB and Morello citing the concerns that Morello was qualified, although they may not have come as, as high up on the ranking system, but factoring into counsel's decision were they were a local business and counsel wished to give a local business an opportunity to succeed. So I was asked to evaluate some of the legal case related to this per the letter received from counsel from Janeway Towing. First, the selection of towing companies does not involve the expenditure of any municipal funds. Therefore, the RFP was not subject to the competitive bidding process. The borough coded section 1402 provides an pertinent amount that all contracts or purchases in excess of the base amount of $18,500 shall not be made except with and from the lowest qualified and responsible bidder. Also pursuant to sections 41.713 of the Home Rule Charter, competitive bids are not required for contracts for labor, materials, supplies or services aggregating in no greater than the amount from time to time established by counsel by ordinance in the administrative code in compliance with public bidding requirements. Further, Norristown's towing ordinance is says service rendered by the contractor shall be submitted directly to the owner or LSE of the vehicle involved and in consideration for the work performed by the contractor. The municipality shall not be expending money and should not be responsible for or pay any of the cost charges or consideration. In this matter, the requirement for competitive bidding is not even triggered because the selection of towers does not involve the expenditure of public funds. Second, Norristown counsel never departed from its RFP. Rather, the procedure set forward was followed to conclusion. Even though the RFP involved a scoring system, there was no legal requirement nor any provision of the RFP that stated that selection of the towing companies would be made solely on the scoring system. In fact, the RFP is clear that Norristown intended to execute towing agreements with multiple contractors. And finally, Norristown maintained complete discretion over the selection of towers. This was in the language and never deviated from the specified course that set forth in evaluating proposals. The RFP was clear that proposals will be submitted for further consideration by municipal council, which may select or reject any contractor at council's discretion. Thank you.
Mr. Solicitor, thank you very much. Counsel, any questions or comments? I'd like to request a motion to approve the towing contracts to EVB and Morello Incorporated.
Second.
Does it require roll call? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. One remaining item under code, I'd like to request a motion to approve Harb certificates of appropriateness for 672 Cone Street, 607 Noble Street and 72 East Penn Street.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. I'd like to request a motion to adjourn. Sorry, yes, counsel?
I'd like a motion to speak about the Carver Center.
To do what?
To speak about the Carver Center.
Okay.
I'd like to call for a motion to adjourn.
Okay, a motion to open the agenda in a second.
Currently, I, on the board of the, the people who go to the Carver Center, talk about the Carver Center, right now, they are in need of a pool cover for the pool. I just wanted to know if we can approve to buy them a cover for their pool before it starts really snowing real bad.
Okay. Councilman Perry, unless my council colleagues disagree, I don't think that that's a question that can really be answered tonight. And I think that administration needs an opportunity just to, to look at the request and then let us know whether or not that's possible as opposed to doing it on the floor tonight. Counsel, do you disagree?
No.
I'd like to request a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Meeting adjourned.